Any order, please arise for questions like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Open the meeting to the public for comments. No comments from the public. We have a presentation tonight from an engineering company and I probably will blow how to pronounce it, but Chazen?
Chazen.
Chazen.
Yes.
We have the floor, gentlemen.
Okay, good. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for having us come up here this evening and let me pass a couple of things out. I wish we could say we brought some warm weather with us, but even though we came from the south.
You took it away.
We speared her away, I think.
Thank you.
My name's David Rollins and I'm an associate with the Chazen Companies and I'm here tonight with Joe Lanaro, Joe's a senior engineer at our Saratoga County office. And we're pleased, very pleased to be here. And I understand our purpose tonight is to brief you on a couple of projects that we've had the opportunity to submit a proposal for professional services on. I'm going to begin very briefly by introducing our company and then Joe, turn it over to Joe, who's going to briefly describe the projects as we understand them and bring up the speed on our approach and the way we look at the whole matter and why our approach, we feel like our approach is a solid one. We also asked if Bob Clark could be here tonight as well to answer any questions you might have as to what the triggers are with this project and need to begin quickly, et cetera. A little bit about our background, and I'm going to be as brief as I can here. Chazen Company has been around for a little bit over 50 years. It was begun by Milt Chazen out of Poughkeepsie. Milt is an engineer. Today, the company is run by two gentlemen, Richard Chazen, who is Milt's son, and Dan Stumm. Dan is both engineers. Dan was formerly with the Department of Health for many years in Albany. We've got about 55, 60 people now in three offices, one in Saratoga County and one in Poughkeepsie and one in Newburgh. And we do, well, about $5 million a year in gross revenues. That's about right for a company of that size. But most of our work can be grouped into four different categories. We do municipal planning and engineering. We do land development work. We do environmental restoration, all the things that fall into that. And we do campus planning and engineering. We work a lot with hospitals and institutions, that kind of thing. Our municipal work involves a lot of specialty services, like a product we call Village Plus, which we can talk about if you like, and standard engineering services, everything from wastewater treatment to clean water investigations, roads, and all the things that go into municipal work. And these are described real briefly in some of the materials I handed out. We are an approved firm for wastewater engineering by the Environmental Facilities Corporation. We're doing work in the New York City watershed right now. That's a very important area in the state for wastewater work. And we're also approved on the approval list for Region 5 of the D E C, permanent environmental conservation. Let's see. Let me briefly introduce Joe. Joe, as I mentioned, is our managing engineer out of our Saratoga County office. Joe graduated from Union College with his degree in civil engineering. He's an adjunct professor over there right now. And Joe has a lot of experience in both structural engineering and wastewater engineering. And Joe's going to take over a little bit and describe our project as we understand it. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to review the proposals that we've outlined for the projects that we've been discussing, but essentially, there's two projects. One has to do with addressing some construction-related issues with wastewater treatment plant. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but there's some materials that are under decay, some rusting of structural members. There's wet insulation, some ceiling panels are starting to collapse. Based upon a review of the conditions at the wastewater treatment plant, we think there's a couple of mechanisms that are going on that are either problem-related or symptom-related, symptom being caused by the problem or several problems. The second project is associated with rerouting a force main. If you're not familiar with the district's collection system, there are three pump stations that capture wastewater within the village limits. And those pump stations discharge this effluent back to the wastewater treatment plant either in a combined series or running in parallel. Currently, the system is composed of a gravity sewer system, which is a very old system and does capture some groundwater. They call that an INI problem or inflow and infiltration problem. And when you have very heavy rains, there's a lot of water getting into the sanitary sewer system and these pumps just can't keep up with it. And you have some overflow that's occurring at a low spot in the system, which is very near your water supply intakes, which is not a good place for wastewater systems to be overflowing. So to try to address this INI study or issue, we're looking at a study of the overall system. The concept that's currently being proposed is routing the sanitary sewer that is running up along Lake Street, which, this is the South End Pump Station. Let me point out these pump stations. South End Pump Station, Maple Street Pump Station, and then this is the North End Pump Station. The North End and the Maple Street were part of a project that was completed in the early 90s, late 80s by a firm out of Troy. This is an older pump station, but it has had several upgrades. This pump station pumps directly up to where the old wastewater treatment plant used to be. That North End Pump Station captures that and then pumps it in concert with the Maple Street Pump Station directly to the treatment plant. The intention here is to try to capture this force main near White Avenue, run it over towards the Maple Street Pump Station, and then run it north along Maple Street to the wastewater treatment plant. And the purpose that this route was initially selected is because Maple Street is intended for some highway improvements. And while the road is being torn up, we can try to facilitate the same sanitary sewer improvement, trying to reduce the cost to the village for the combined project. In order to validate that this is a feasible project and also come up with some idea of what the overall project costs would be, we're recommending a feasibility study be done. The intention is to evaluate the implications associated with each one of these pump stations and the effects on the wastewater treatment plant. The net effect here is we're trying to make these pump stations work more efficiently and capture more of the water in the system so that way they don't back up and come up somewhere where they're not supposed to. We're getting it to the wastewater treatment plant so that the treatment plant itself can try to process this water more quickly. To make sure this is going to work the way it's intended, we want to evaluate the implications on each one of these pump stations, see if there are going to be any additional improvements required there in concert with this force main relocation. And then we also want to look at the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant, or the first part of the system inside the wastewater treatment plant, to make sure that we're not going to overflow something there that can actually be properly routed through the wastewater treatment plant, processed and discharged back to either the onsite treatment facilities where it's definitely discharged, which is to the north of the village. In concert with this study, we want to do a second study on the treatment plant itself. This is intended to try to address the condition of that building. And we broke that up into a multi-phased feasibility review. We think that the source of the problem is the mechanical systems within the building, inadequate air exchanges that resulted in a very corrosive environment within the structure, resulting in the condensation forming in the insulation at the ceiling, causing the ceiling damage, and also providing an environment that would allow the structural members, the steel members, to start to become corroded. And our approach is threefold in that we want to validate the integrity of the structure itself, doing some testing on steel, inspecting welds and bolts, to make sure structurally what's still there is adequate, or if it will possibly need to be included in a renovation project. And we want to assess the condition of the electrical systems. A number of the systems are suspended from the ceiling where all of this condensation was formed and started to impact like lighting fixtures and things of that nature. We want to try to assess that. So in this study, the goal would be is to define what the actual problem is and what all terms are to address that problem, and then ancillary to that, what symptoms need to be addressed as well, the repair to the structural steel, replacement of roof members, and replacement of insulation members. Our approach was initially to offer these as two separate projects, even though there's some merit to combining them, and applying a fee schedule, which is similar, which is based on our Village Plus program, which is an incentives program that offers municipalities a 10% savings over our standard municipal rate. If the project can be completed concurrently, we feel that there's some added benefit to the municipality and because of the potential for overlap in services, we were able to offer an additional 10% savings on top of that. So in general, that's the approach for these two different projects. And I'd be happy to answer questions regarding those project proposals before I turn it back over to the major.
Any questions, Bob?
We've already talked today.
Yeah, we've been up a couple times.
The force main from?
South End Pump Station.
No, the next one up.
Maple Street.
Maple Street. Is that, are you intending to run another main all the way to the sewer plant?
That's part of what we would be looking at with the study, because it wouldn't be along the same route. There may be some merit to combining these force mains into one force main. When a pump kicks on, it sees a certain amount of force that it has to pump against called a total dynamic head. So separating these lines and making them run separately reduces the amount of friction that the pumps are going to have to pump against, allowing the pumps to pump at a much higher rate. So since the pumps are pumping at a higher rate, they're taking water out of the collection system faster and getting it to the treatment plant faster. That could be accomplished by either running it in a separate line or maybe enlarging the line. So the idea as part of the study is to find out what is the most economic, what is the best way to go. You know, we don't want to go too far where now these pumps don't work, you've got to replace the pumps, or maybe there's no way to do it without replacing the pumps. And we need to really define this very clearly so that way the village can go into this project knowing this is exactly what we're going to have to do to start and finish the project, and this is exactly how much we expect it to cost. So when we start looking at funding mechanisms, we can start this project, pocketly funded, and you don't run into problems later by not having enough money to finish the job. And that's where this feasibility study is supposed to take.
Board, have any questions?
That was kind of my concern also, is that Maple Street Pump Station. You know, would that, rerouting that, would that put an excess strain on that substation? Would we need to upgrade it?
Need to.
To handle all the wastewater from the South End?
Right, because we're a legitimate concern, and that's why the feasibility study is important, because the Maple Street and the North End Pump Station are relatively new pump stations. And the goal would be to create a plan that would allow for the relocation to address the INI problem without causing significant improvements to be spread across the entire village system. There is a good possibility that the South End Pump Station will need to be upgraded because of its age and configuration. But the intention is to try to minimize that type of improvement and put the money where it's going to give us the biggest return as far as accommodating these increased rates. We also want to be careful that as part of the study, we don't do something that requires significant improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, the goal is to just try to reduce the INI problem enough where we anticipate that we have minimal impacts at the low part of the system, which does experience overflowing under heavy INI conditions.
Any other questions?
Yes. How many municipalities do you have currently under contract as a group?
At least we have, out of, let's see, out of Poughkeepsie, we have, we're currently doing work with three or four municipalities, LaGrange, Towne LaGrange. Finished up with the Village of Goshen. For now, on Shawangung, Maybrook, and there's a couple of others. I can get a more definitive answer to you. Right off the top of my head, I can think of all. Out of Albany, we're working with?
Towne Rondan.
Towne Rondan.
We're currently working on a project in the Village, assisting with their master plan for water supply improvements to the village, a 25-year master plan.
We're doing the master plan for the city of Poughkeepsie.
We get involved with municipal engineering aspects. We do a lot of water, wastewater, solid waste management, municipal planning, G I S systems for drainage cleaning, master cleaning, local zoning, log development, subdivision regulation development, assistance with the planning boards and zoning boards of the fields. These are the types of services that when you look at them comprehensively, you can offer a municipality a streamlined approach, and that kind of leads us into the Village Plus program and all of the different things that you can offer a municipality. We have, like David indicated, 50 to 60 design professionals in three offices. We have civil engineers, environmental engineers, structural engineers, geologists, hydrogeologists, environmental scientists, landscape architects, urban and municipal planners. By bringing all of these people together, you're able to offer a very diverse range of experience and expertise to a local municipality. The way that the Village Plus program is structured is you can offer a basic service that's clearly outlined to act as an administrator, being present like one day per week or one day every two weeks at the village hall, being available to inspectors, superintendents, operators to address day-to-day operations on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. But then you have the expert, you have that one individual's area of expertise, and then that person can also pull on the expertise and experience of the company and its structure such that it's a term contract. You get to have this, and then what it does allows you to streamline the projects. And when a larger project comes up, you have somebody that's familiar with the system can come up with a way to structure it in a very cost-effective manner, allowing you to initially start a project without having to spend a lot of time scoping it out or looking for funding mechanisms, because that individual will have the opportunity to structure that for you on an annual basis.
Tom, I'm going to take you to do the feasibility studies for the rerouting of the lines and then also the feasibility study for the plant itself.
We would anticipate a four to six week period of time to, once we had authorization received, to complete all of the investigations, document. We would submit a draft report in that interim for presentation to just show where we're heading with it, make sure everyone is comfortable with where we're heading with it, and then we would finalize that report. The intention is the final feasibility reports would be something that would be entered into record as a final document that can be used to facilitate funding for the actual implementation of whatever the alternative village would pursue. We need just more than one solution, and these solutions will be initially presented at a preliminary stage, so that way more attention can be given to one alternative over another, to really have a final alternative clearly defined in greater detail, with the other alternatives to support the direction that the board makes choose to pursue.
I guess there's no more questions.
I have just a couple of other things to mention. We've made some preliminary inquiries as to possible avenues of funding for projects like this. And it appears that there may be four different things we might be able to tap. One would be Clean Water, Clean Air Bond Act monies, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, low-interest loans, possibly small cities community development block grants, or what are the rural utility services for what are the waste disposal systems grants. There's a couple of interesting things going on, as you're well aware of, especially with the Lake, Lake Champlain, the Lake Champlain Management Plan that might tie in very well with these projects and qualify the village for more funding and higher priorities. We need to look into that a little bit more. I know that there's an application, I spoke with Joe, we're set over at the Division of Water in Region 5 over at Raybra. We said there's an application, an RFP coming out in late December, early January for feasibility studies, design work kind of projects that tie into the Lake Champlain Management Plan. And that would be, that may be something that might be worth looking into. Whether we can structure this to fit into the management plan is a big issue right now. And those projects are definite priorities. A straight INI project would be a lower priority. There may be some opportunities with, to jointly finance both those projects, even though they're not really related. But if we can show that root repair work is a major structural project that is very important to the existence of the treatment works, then you could probably roll in that project to finance them both at the same time. You may be able to pre-finance some of the project while you're conducting the search for grants. Then, once the grant monies come in, you roll over the rest of the financing into another I U P through the Environmental Facilities Corp. for longer-term financing. I think there's a lot of different options about that that we can look at. It definitely appears to be some good sources out there for funding this project.
That's good to hear.
But just before we, I get my hopes up again on funding that, are any of those projects, are any of those funding sources income-based in terms of the overall average income of our residents or property value? Because I've been down this road with HUD before.
Okay. HUD is a real tough one. Our best shops are really the Clean Water, Clean Air Bond Act and E F C.
And those are not income-related?
No, no.
They're priority-based.
Okay.
Right. But HUD is a lot more competitive, the applications are a lot tougher, and it's probably a slimmer chance. And those are income-based.
Right, yes.
Any other questions?
I thank you very much, Joe.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate it.
And we'll be in touch one way or the other, whatever happens here.
Okay, great.
Take your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Second meeting, or a mention of a previous meeting, I agree. You heard the motion made in second discussion. All those in favor, vote on use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Bills? We all have copies of the bills. Is any question on the bills?
Make the motion now, be it to the bill.
I have a comment to make on the bills. The company that did the re-lining on Cadence Street?
Yeah. The opening company is? Is that a contract, 98 June? Municipal Services, $59,500.
Yes, it is.
You want to hold that?
I think that we would ask the board to approve that, but we want to wait for Tom Reese, okay, before we send it out. Approve it, we'll put it in the vault, and when Tom says it's okay, we'll send it. But I would like Mr. Reese to hold.
Any other questions on the bills? I need a motion.
Will the bills be approved as reported?
Second. Except for claim number 554?
Right.
With the approval of the wastewater treatment manager? We have a second?
Yes.
Okay. You heard the motion made in second. Is any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, by use, approve, by use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence you have is from the Northern Tier Chamber of Commerce. It's addressed to the mayor and board of trustees. It's regarding the E D A grant, and the chamber is offering their assistance in any way when you get down to actually getting the details of this grant, which we really don't have. The second letter is also from the Northern Tier Chamber of Commerce, and they're thanking the village board and Mike O'Brien, who is the rec center facility manager, for the use of this hall for their meetings. It said, "It seems very nice to have a centralized place that everybody knows about to have their meetings, and they have better attendance." The next letter is from Community Link. This is the same group that the village allowed last year to use this room and the parking lot for a help fair. They are asking to use it again this coming Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to approximately noon. I have spoken to Mr. O'Brien, and he has no problem with that. They did come in today and ask if the board, if I thought the board was going to approve it, and I told him I would call him in the morning.
What's about, you don't dare speak for us, Beth.
I would authorize a comment to the city. So is there any question?
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
Yes.
Is that what you're going to make an motion?
That's a good, yes.
Okay. Got a motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor, by use a sign of aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
The last piece of correspondence we have was hand-delivered today. It's from Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company, addressed to the board of trustees. Please consider this an invoice for the fire company share of the fire contract in the town of Champlain in the amount of $14,000.
The year is up. Actually, I don't think that needs, I tried to tell them to give Mary a bill.
I know. I mean, it's in the contract that the village pays this, so this really doesn't need any authorization. It was authorized when you approved the contract. So I don't really think this needs any action.
On the Northern Tier's letter on the grant on the Lake Front, we certainly would like to have him involved. We certainly would like to get involved ourselves if we knew what we were doing. We have no idea, other than we know we're going to get some money. We have heard nothing. Maybe we should be doing some contacting. Maybe we should call the Department of State.
Okay.
See what's going on, because spring will be here, what you think. I know everybody's praying for it because they've been used to this weather, but...
I thought maybe after election, when business got down to business, that we would hear something.
I couldn't do it.
So we can perhaps give them a call. That's all the correspondence we have.
Thank you, Beth. Reports of mayors and trustees. We postponed last meeting the rules of procedure for the board, and we're, I guess, have to act upon this tonight. Has everybody had a chance to read them or have any input other than what was here? I don't think there's much changed in what we have been doing, other than I guess we don't need to, we don't need motions. At least, not motions, but no seconds?
I believe that that's your prerogative.
Yeah.
You know, it's not necessary, but if you wish to continue that practice, I don't see a problem with that.
I think, I always thought it was so nice.
Let you know who's awake and who's not.
Actually, I thought one of the most interesting parts of this rule of procedure were the guidelines for public comment.
Yep.
I think if the board decides to approve a portion or this entire rule, rules of procedure, that we should post this.
I think so. It's a good idea, and I'm going to read it. The public should be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of the meeting. Speakers may step to the front of room, may step, they don't have to, but they may. Speakers must give their name and address and organization if any. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must be limited to remarks of five minutes on a given topic. Can I have a question there? I knew I had something. Supposed as a rebuttal, do they get another five minutes, or is it just the first five?
I think it's five minutes when, at that time when they speak. If they choose to present a rebuttal, I think it would be another five minutes. But I also think that the mayor can set out the guidelines prior to the hearing, and you know, remind people what the guidelines are.
And a speaker may not yield remaining time if they have to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, interrupt a speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information.
There's three more on the next page.
All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member therefore. That's a good point. Speakers shall observe. Commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum. Commonly accept the rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representative may address the board by written communication. The rest of the stuff, the rules of procedure, actually pertains to the board itself and how we conduct the board meetings, I guess.
I don't see a lot of...
I don't have a problem with what's there. I think it's just basically putting down and writing what we've been doing.
It seems like we've been following pretty much the...
Well, if we want to adopt this, we have to make a motion, I think.
Make a motion that we accept the rules of procedure as read?
Second it?
Two seconds, it's the same kind.
That's fine, we can do that.
Flip coins.
Maybe last time, right?
You've heard the motion made, seconded. Is any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I have some surplus equipment to declare surplus. I got a MicroDeli micro-lined personal doctor-made printer, a Unisystem, I guess it is, without a hard drive, but a keyboard, a Minuteman power supply, another Unisystem. I don't know what that is, but it's all right. Another Unisystem, whatever these things are, and a couple of more printers. Anyway, they're declared surplus, or do we have to have a motion?
Motion.
Yeah? Need a motion?
Well, it would look better.
Okay. Stanley made the motion?
All seconded.
They seconded all. You heard the motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
Are we going out to bid on this?
We're surplusing it.
Not that, I mean, are we putting it out to bid, Bill?
Yeah, we just advertise it. That, we didn't, hot stand thing wasn't around again.
Right. But is that the board's wishes, that we advertise this in the paper?
It costs us more to advertise it.
I was just wondering if that was something that possibly the school district could use.
Well, that was the other thing we were going to ask. If you have a closing date on this, if we were allowed to offer to the school after the closing date?
As far as I'm concerned, you have a closing date on it. After that, what happens to it? It's gone.
Soon, air quality does some, doesn't it? I'm not doing this anymore.
If we put a closing date, it's for the first year.
First of the year?
That's fine.
And after that?
That's it.
Some of the stuff to advertise, it's really not...
That's what I was thinking.
You know, it costs us, what, 75 bucks or so to advertise it? I bet you won't get 75 bucks for the whole thing.
Well, I prefer not to run it as a legal, because I'm not, I don't know how many people read the legals. And if we run it in just for sale, it's not that expensive, but I don't know, our son can tell you the value of this better than I can.
Did you see those eyes you got?
Depends on the person, who the guy is for.
How much would a small egg cost us, roughly?
Oh...
Ten, fifteen dollars?
About that. That's high.
Depending on how many days you run it.
Right. And what had we decided before? Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Or Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Hi.
Before that goes into effect, I was just saying, I know it'd be hard to give it to the Northeastern School, but what if we use it in our own library? Is there a need for online capabilities at the library, before we declare it completely surplus?
I don't think you can do this online with this equipment.
I didn't know how old the equipment was.
This is real old stuff, isn't it?
Okay. Is that the green monitors? Is that the stuff with, are those the computers with the green monitors that are sitting on the filing cabinets?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Upset.
Yeah, that's it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, please, oh, wait a minute. Something. Okay. Authorize, I guess I got to authorize the clerk to notify the Clinton County Emergency Preparedness about building demolition. What I found out this past week, just to, to, to enlighten you. Trenor Park, Luntster River Park has gone since August. 911's still carrying 20 trailers in that park. Addresses, they are still car- carrying the Bertha Thompson property. I think there's a resolution later on. Do we have a resolution?
You can just make a motion, but it does require a roll call vote.
Yeah. Take, we passed a resolution, or the board passed a resolution, accepting the street name and the street of Bissinway. When it was put in, we have to now undo that. There are no longer any Bissinway up there. It's all, it's completely gone. That's, so that's what we have to do, and then we have to notify 911 so they can take them off, which they already have, because I was down there, but they got to have an official notification. So we, I can make that motion, right, Beth?
Yes, you can.
Make that motion that we, I don't want to say that.
Just that we advise Clinton County Emergency Preparedness that the Bertha Thompson property is now a vacant piece of property, and Bissinway is also just that, a vacant piece of property. Put nothing on it.
I'll make that motion. One second. Heard the motion made, seconded. Is any more discussion?
I have, I have a question. Are we doing two separate things here? Are we notifying Clinton County Emergency Preparedness regarding the demolitions of these properties? And then, in addition to that, do we also have to undesignate Bissinway as Bissinway? Are you suggesting that two separate?
No, because Bissinway was privately owned. It was not, the village never owned that.
Okay.
Way means privately owned. So we do not have to, like, undo that. We just have to tell them that it no longer exists.
Okay. So the only, the only operation that we have here tonight is to notify Clinton County Emergency Preparedness?
Correct.
Of the status of these properties?
Yeah, there's no longer a Bissinway. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Duprah?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Motion carried. Reminder, winter legislative meeting, February 28th to March 2nd. If we don't get these reservations in, if you're going to go within the next couple of weeks, we will not stay at the Army. You will be someplace else, rather than the old teni. I don't know. I know I'm going.
I would like very much to go, but I can almost guarantee that I wouldn't want to go.
Anybody else? Okay. Got it.
One.
One. I'd like to, this time, thank everybody who participated Friday night in the parade of toys, and thank the very, very many people that helped us. Name everybody, I'll forget somebody. It was very, very successful. I'm very pleased with the crowd. I think it just, it just went off real well. It seems that it improved year by year. So to those people that came out, a very big thank you. Also, there is a dinner this Sunday night honoring George Cookman. No, Sunday. Sunday, 13th. He has been chosen by the Chamber of Commerce as Man of the Year, Person of the Year, whatever you want to call it. And he does a lot for the community, especially on those special nights like what we had Friday night, and I'd like to thank George for that. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to Eddie Arnold. He was time and talents. I think you saw that the street decorations were up in a nice and timely fashion, and they were well done. He's had to spend a lot of time, because we have ice sandwich in the ice store. Village looked great, and the General Health for helping them. I guess within three days, they had it all done. Trees looked nice. I've heard many, many nice comments about the design. I'd like to thank those two gentlemen, and anybody else who participated in helping That's it for me, Trustee Moore. Okay, I have the report of the public works, the electric department. Public Works worked on the salt barn, assisted line crew digging and setting poles for Champlain Plastics, helped unload and P.E. delivery Monday, worked on two plug sewers on Maple Street. The electric department, Benny worked on the Christmas lights and decorating. Danny did the meter reading. Brian and Tim will be working on the Champlain Plastics line. Now, I have a report on the, Doug is not here tonight, but on the South End Sewer Project, December 7th, 1998. The project is proceeding, and current schedule is as follows. Final check of survey data, week of December 7th. Advertise for bids for Route 9B work, week of December 21st. Pre-bid meeting, December 29th. Receive bids, January 5th. Route 9B work to commence and to be completed, January 99. What's the score, I have a search. Watch it. On the, this project is, are these ones come in yet, signed?
We had two that went out, one is back.
We're halfway there.
Yes.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks, thank you, Stanley. Trustee Duprah?
Following Trustee Moore, I also have a project report from Doug Ferris regarding the intake vault project update. Mr. Ferris could not be with us tonight because of the scheduling conflict, but he did provide us with the updates he would normally have provided, had he been able to be here himself. I shall read it briefly. "Project proceeding smoothly. Contractor is approximately one week behind schedule due to difficulty encountered during dewatering of copper dam. Once this challenge was met, construction of the intake vault proceeded with the base slab concrete placement on Tuesday, November 24th, and the placement of the intake vault walls Thursday, December 3rd. Both concrete placements met project specifications. The deck for the vault is scheduled to be placed on Friday, December 11th. Mechanical work is scheduled to begin Wednesday, December 9th, with the installation of the gate valve on the lakeside of the vault. Today divers installed sturdy plastic bags custom formed by PowerTex. PowerTex provided free of charge to the village on the intake screens of the main intake to shut off water flow for gate valve installation." And I would actually like to reiterate some of Doug Ferris's comments from a previous meeting on the work that this company is doing on the project. They are very, very professional, they are very tidy, things just run very smoothly, and they are doing, doing an excellent job. And I will give the name of Shekels from Malone. And we do appreciate the considerations that they've made for the village. I realize they're getting paid to do the work, but work that is being paid to be done is not always done as well, because we don't really think they should be complimented or anything.
They certainly, certainly, certainly doing a fine job, though. Really pleased with their work.
Continuing along with water report, I've received a monthly report from Chief Water Plant Operator Gary Malinsky. He has performed the basic monthly functions as he usually does. The highlights on the report, as you can probably guess, regard the wind that we've had, and the necessity to use the alternate intake. And it has also caused the village to use a lot more DE or diatomaceous earth. So he wanted us to be aware of this. Hopefully, these winds will subside soon, and we can get back to normal operation, but if they don't, I know...
Pray for ice.
He'll be, he'll be right on top of it.
Yep.
The second...
On the lake.
Yes, about that. On the lake, yes. Good point.
He also indicates that the vault project is well underway, the concrete for the floor and the walls has been poured, and everyone has been working well together and appears to be going smoothly, which I appreciate his comments on that as well. Third item, once again, regarding the water plant, I would like to congratulate Mike Riley on his completion of the training that he attended in Lake Placid. I do have a, I do have a certificate here for him, indicated that he completed the fall conference on fire safety and respiratory protection. As I initially stated, I congratulate him on the completion of his training, and would request a copy of the certificate replaced in this file. Next item on the agenda regards the resolution for New York State Retirement Benefit. We have, village personnel has completely reviewed this letter and determined that the provisions under these sections of the law do benefit the current employees of the village. Therefore, I would request that this resolution be considered by the board. I can read it. At a meeting of the board of trustees of Village of Rousas Point Health Civic Center, Rousas Point, New York, on December 7th, 1998, following resolution. Be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Rousas Point does hereby elect to provide the additional pension benefits of Section 75E, 75G, 75I, and retirement social security law, as the New York City IAPA limited. Be it further resolved that the effective date of such election shall be the 8th day of December, 1998. And I place that resolution on the board's approval.
We have a second?
Second.
Need a roll call vote on this right now?
Yes, please.
Oh, you heard the motion made, second. Is any discussion? If not, roll call vote, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Duprah?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes out.
Last item on the agenda is regarding, an update for the board regarding the CSEA, Union Village Negotiations. Trustee Ron Burke and myself had a meeting sometime last week, was it? Last week? And we discussed items that the board wished to bring to negotiating table, and at that time, we also discussed the possibility of proceeding informally with the union on any items that we could mutually agree to, to resolve prior to actual negotiations. We made the suggestion to the union representatives, and they agreed that there were possibly some items that we could resolve without full negotiation. We had, we had a preliminary meeting this evening at 6:00 prior to the board meeting. We exchanged requests. The union representatives were amenable to our suggestions, and I think Ron and I were amenable to their suggestions. There, I think, are one of two points that we can definitely agree upon, and... and remove them from the negotiation process because it's something that we mutually agree upon. We are going to continue to proceed informally and have agreed to reconvene probably the first week of January. Once again, if there are any specific points that any board members wish to bring to our attention, please do so at any time. Drop a note in our mailbox, call us at home, whatever. I have a list which I will provide after the meeting of, of the items that, that we are currently suggesting should be either renegotiated or removed from the contract entirely. Any questions on that?
Other than to thank you, because I think it's important that we can get this solved without knock out, drag out, bad.
Well, it's very important to get the, get the contract resolved as soon as possible. It only helps us in our budget process.
That's true. Buffy has to be here, thanks.
And that is it, thank you.
Oh, Dale, how come you only got one thing on the agenda? Trustee Burke. Check the supplemental.
My first item is a resolution to transfer funds. I'd like to read your resolution. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point has heretofore on March 16th, 1987, established a capital reserve type fund to purchase fire department equipment. And whereas the Board of Trustees is of the option that a 1998 medium duty Type III ambulance should be purchased for the village purposes, see specification attached, for the sum of no more than $130,500. Thirty-four thousand dollars of this amount has been donated by Montgomery Hosehoof and Ladder Company, number one, with the balance of $96,500 financed from the fire department capital reserve. The truck will be delivered to the Ross's Point Fire Station.
I don't think you have to go further than that. It's only, this is only a paperwork for clarification. The ambulance was delivered in June.
Right. The resolution will, shall not take effect for at least forty-five days after this resolution is adopted. I make the motion that we accept the resolution.
I'm second.
I think we need a roll call vote on this.
You heard the motion made and seconded, is any discussion, further discussion? If not, roll call vote, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Duprah?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
My second item is, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase a laptop computer for the village office. The one that we have is, I guess, outdated, is what I want to say.
Outdated.
We are very, in very much need of this laptop. And the funds will be coming from the, from the electric department. So we do have the funds. And I would make a motion that we purchase a laptop computer in the next two weeks.
We're in the process of inviting specifications for it, as soon as they come in.
That's used for utility buildings.
It's all, yeah, it's all used for utility building. And it's imperative that we do get this as quick as possible because keep our bills straight. The ones going out, not coming in. I'll second that. You've heard the motion made and seconded, is any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my last item is, I'd just like to inform the board that we had a, I guess, a surprise this morning. Wasn't surprised. We had five reclosures that were on surplus, and the Village of Bergen, this morning, purchased those five reclosures at $4,000 apiece. And they hand-delivered a check for $20,000 this morning. And we'd like to thank Kurt Wilson, because without his help, this wouldn't have been possible. And that's all I have.
See, there's your laptop.
There you go.
And then some. Okay, thank you, Dale. Trustee Burke?
First item on the agenda is just an update on the Academy Street Sewer Relining Project, which I believe has been completed now for approximately three weeks. One thing not on there, on the agenda, is the monthly report that Tom Reed has submitted. Again, general work that's been done down there on a monthly basis has been completed once again. And he is still working on getting engineering proposals and bids to do the ceiling work in the clarifier room as well as for the South End Sewer Pumping Station project that was also presented by the Shays and Group tonight. My final item is a resolution. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point entered into a lease agreement with the Canadian National Railway dated December 30th, 1986, for a particular parcel of land. And whereas the land was needed to spread sludge which was generated by wastewater treatment plant operations. And whereas the treasurer opened a separate bank account entitled Sewer Lease from the eligible funds from the construction of the new wastewater treatment plant on or about June 1st, 1987. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ross's Point deemed it no longer necessary to continue the lease agreement and thus terminated said lease effective January 1st, 1998. Be it therefore resolved, the treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to close the sewer lease bank account and transfer the monies to the sewer system capital reserve account. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The following question before going was duly put to a vote on a roll call, which resulted as follows.
I have a second to that.
Second.
Any more discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Duprah?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. On that subject, I think we still should pursue and try to purchase that line from CN.
It's, it's landlocked.
It's landlocked, and if, if somebody were to get it and put something there, it may be detrimental to us. It's not that, I don't know, we, we have talked about this before. I've come to the conclusion that dealing with railroads is almost an impossible task. They, they have a mindset of their own. But...
Especially if they can't pick a language.
He sure you said that.
He didn't say that. I didn't hear him say that.
Anyway, I think, I think we should, I think we should pursue it. I don't know. And I think the second thing we should pursue, probably everybody keep it in mind, is that little building over there now that it's, it's... I guess we'd have to go to the Department of Rivers for a formal proposal. Can't seem to be given, have them give it to us, so... Okay, that's all I have. Beth, do you have anything tonight?
I think the entire board is aware of the fact that...
Thank you, Ron. I'm sorry.
One of our employees was injured last Friday. Dan McCollum. Dan will be out until, of course, until the doctor releases him, and I do not know when that will be. And I just want to reiterate what the mayor already said and thank everyone for the help on Friday night. We could not have the studies like that if it wasn't for our volunteer citizens. And we really, really appreciate your help. That's all.
Pleasure. Ready for terms, always, and I will move the key to the public. If not, we're ready for adjournments.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't ask, ready to discuss. Just over an hour.